I'd like to call this meeting the Westland City Council of Order. We will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance led by Council President Protam Andrea Rukowski.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Clerk, roll call.
Councilman Gobow.
Present.
Councilman Hersberg.
Here.
Councilman Hornbuckle.
Present.
Councilman McDermott.
Here.
Protam Rukowski.
Present.
Councilwoman Sampe.
Present.
President Hart.
Here.
Coram, this president.
All right, we'll move to special presentations and announcements. I'll begin with the Compassionate City Organization. Come up and tell us all about these wonderful kids.
And hi, good evening. Mayor Landau and Chief of Staff Reddy, President Hart and Council. My name is Deanna Statchow and I am the Chairperson of the Compassionate City. I have with me this evening Laura Fritz, Vice Chair, Donna Young, Recording Secretary, and Shannon Ziegler. And I'm going to turn the microphone over to Shannon because she's got some introductions to do. Thank you.
Hi, thank you for having us. I want to, we have three students this evening that we want to recognize for their random acts of kindness. So Amanda, Daryl? No, I don't have a mic. Oh, here it is.
Look what I have.
It does.
Good evening. So tonight we have three students and our first student is from Schweitzer Elementary. I'm going to ask Liam Craig, who's a fourth grader, along with his principal, Mrs. Brickie, and classroom teacher, Ms. Gray, to come on up here to the front of the room. Okay, so Liam is constantly a shining star in class. He goes above and beyond what is asked and helps others with whatever they need. Liam is always being a leader and doing the right thing. He will play with students at recess who don't have someone to play with and is constantly looking out for his friends and classmates to ensure that they are safe. Thank you Liam for your compassionate act. And our next student this evening is from Taft-Galloway Elementary School. I'm going to ask Daylin Bell to come up with his school social worker, Mrs. Clark.
Nice dodge.
Sharp draft.
So Daylin, his random act of kindness is Daylin takes it upon himself to clean up the classroom floor without being asked by the teacher. He is a great friend, an awesome student, and a wonderful son. Daylin, thank you for your compassion.
Next, I want to ask Jayceon Barnett Robinson to come on up. I'm going to also ask his social worker, Jewel Summers, as well as Anthony Henahosa, his teacher, and his principal, Julie Mitich, to come on up. So Jayceon has earned more cards for kindness than any other student at Walker. From offering some of his food to another student that didn't have anything, to taking initiative and helping others around the classroom without being asked, Jayceon has been kind, caring, and compassionate during his attendance at Walker. Let's give him a round of applause.
So at this time, I believe members of our Westland City Council are going to come down and present our students with certificates. So we have our mayor, our clerk, and our council president.
I think this is your getting pulled down the line.
Yes.
I've been asked for what the day of council, Mayor Rukowski, to come on up. He's taken up all, I'm staying behind yours.
I got yours, I won't stay behind this one.
So thank you so much, appreciate it.
Let's save everyone's scrunching. Squeeze in a little tighter, please. And on three, one, two, three. Thank you.
All right, if you were here to watch these wonderful kids, you can go ahead and just step right out in the lobby. WLND will be out there to take photos and everything and put it up on our social media platform. Say another round for the kids. Good job. All right, we'll just give them one second to filter out. And you can always come back if you want. Don't worry. If you want to, but you can't. All right, next up, we have announcement from State Representative Kevin Coleman.
Thank you, Council President. Thank you, City Council. I appreciate you giving me just a minute of your time to talk tonight. Always a pleasure to come here and see the great work that our Westland City Council is doing. Really appreciate you guys. I very honored to represent you up in Lansing. We've been working very hard the last couple of months for you. We've gotten a lot of things done. One thing that I just want to mention while I have your ear is that our coffee hour between Commissioner Anderson and I has changed locations. It is going to be at Starbucks. It is the second Monday of every month, so the next one coming up is April 10th. So that's this coming Monday after this, after today. So the coming Monday, 9:00 AM at Starbucks right here at the corner of Warren and Central City. So we do invite anybody from the community to join us. Coffee's on us. Any of you sitting up here, if you want to come pop in, always like to hear a City Council perspective too. So and then anybody at home watching, if you want to come on in, coffee on us. So we do appreciate it. If anybody has any questions, concerns, comments, feedback, anything about what's going on in Lansing or anything that pertains to our community back here, I invite you to give us a call. Our phone number in our office is (517) 373-2275. (517) 373-2275. Our email address is kevincoleman@house.mi.gov. I always give out my cellphone, (734) 751-6321. Feel free to give me a call anytime. One thing that we are doing this month is we are passing out surveys. So if anybody would like a survey, anybody in the audience or anybody at home, I'm going to leave a few here at the paper stand in the lobby of City Hall where we leave our legislative updates. So you can fill this out, give us any feedback you want, and mail it back to us and throw a stamp on it, and that'll come right to our office in Lansing. You know, I always tell people that the reason they call us the representatives is because we represent you. So getting your feedback is very important to helping us do a good job on your behalf up in Lansing. Thanks again for giving us, giving me a moment of your time. Everybody have a great meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rep. All right, now we move to questions or input on the agenda from the public. This section will allow a person to be recognized only at the beginning of the meeting to address the council pertaining to items that are specifically on the business agenda. Questions asked may be responded to during the agenda item following a motion and support from the council. Is there anyone on my right? Is there any on my left? All right, seeing none, we'll close comments on the agenda, move to consent calendar. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Motion from Protam Rukowski, supported from Councilwoman Sampe. Are there any changes to the consent calendar? Councilman McDermott, stand by. I'm on the wrong screen. I apologize. This thing's behaving funny.
No worries.
There we are. Councilman McDermott, sorry about that.
No worries. Good evening. Thank you, Council President. I would like to move item F to new business for discussion. Thank you.
There's a motion to move item F to new business. Is there support?
Support.
Supported from Councilman Hersberg. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent? Seeing no dissent, motion carries unanimously. Moving back to the consent calendar. Is there any discussion? Excuse me, any changes to the consent calendar? Any further changes? Any dissent? Any dissent? Seeing no dissent, motion carries unanimously.
Council has approved the following consent calendar items. Approval of minutes of the regular meeting held March 20, 2023. Approval of minutes of the study session held March 20, 2023. Approval of minutes of study session held March 14, 2023. Approval of request from North Brothers Ford to conduct their annual 5K event on May 13, 2023 between 10:00 AM and 1:00 PM at Central City Tanton Park and to waive the farmer's market rental fee. The rental fee of $320 to be waived for the charitable event. Approval to upgrade the city's existing census platform utilized to monitor water meters in use throughout the city. Administration recommended the proposal from Aetna Supply at a total cost not to exceed $13,500. Approval to renew equipment lease agreement with Canon Solutions Incorporated for multi-function copiers utilized at both City Hall and the police station. Terms of the proposed lease agreement is for 39 months at a monthly rate of $363 each. Approval of purchase of 23 replacement beds for the fire department. Total cost not to exceed $23,177. Last item approved on the consent calendar today, adoption of prepared resolution recognizing Westland Youth Athletic Association as a local nonprofit organization operating within the city of Westland in order to obtain a charitable gaming license from the state of Michigan. Moving to payment of voucher.
Motion from Councilwoman Sampe, supported from Councilman McDermott. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent? Seeing no dissent, motion carried
unanimously.
New business. Item 1. Approval of minutes of the study session held March 27, 2023.
Motion from Protam Rukowski, supported from Councilwoman Sampe. Is there any discussion?
Any discussion? Roll call.
Councilman Gobow.
Yes.
Councilman Hersberg.
Yes.
Councilman Hornbuckle.
Yes.
Councilman McDermott.
Yes.
Councilwoman Rukowski.
Yes.
Councilwoman Sampe.
Yes.
President Hart.
Abstain due to absence.
Motion passes. New business. Item 1A, formerly known as item F in the consent calendar. Approval of annual animal sheltering agreement with the Michigan Humane Society. The agreement shall be for one year, effective immediately, and will be valid until December 31, 2024.
Is there a motion?
So.
Motion from Protam Rukowski. Is there support?
Support.
Supported from Councilman Gobow. Any discussion? Councilman Protam, maker supporter, have any discussion?
Thank you, Council President. So this is the contract to approve our sheltering agreement with the Michigan Humane Society. It is significantly, in my opinion, higher than what we were previously being billed for. However, through negotiations, that seems to be in rate with what I guess we'll call it inflation. Without having a animal sheltering agreement with the Humane Society, the potential is, is that should anybody need to take their animal to the shelter or harmed animal or any animal, they may or may not be able to render us that citizen aid for that animal. So that's part of the reason why having a sheltering agreement is important for our community.
Anything from the supporter? Councilman Gobow.
Councilman McDermott.
Good evening and thank you, Council President. So with this item, I brought this up before in years past, excuse me, and one of my chief concerns is there is a provision in the contract regarding euthanasia of animals. I do agree with my colleague's comments. It is vitally important that we have an animal sheltering agreement here in the city of Westland. Some of our neighboring Humane Societies, such as the Humane Society of Huron Valley in Ann Arbor, up in Bay City, they are no-kill animal shelters. And, you know, we've asked the folks at the Michigan Humane.
Sweet. Someone leaned on a switch.
Hey, DTE, let's switch to talking about DTE now.
All right, show's over. Go home. Sorry, Councilman McDermott, please.
No worries. No worries. As I was saying about DTE, but in regards to the contract with the Humane Society, I do think it is important that we have a contract with Michigan Humane. And I think the folks there at our Westland Humane Society do a fantastic job for, you know, what they do in the service that they provide the city. But my chief concern, as I've expressed in years past, is the euthanasia language in the contract and that I would like to see the Westland Humane Society switch to being a no-kill shelter. I understand it's not as easy as just flipping a switch and rewriting language in a contract to do that. There is the space that it takes up at the Humane Society Center itself and how many animals that they have to have in there. But, you know, I think that the language regarding euthanasia is just something I don't feel fully comfortable with. And considering that we have neighboring Humane Societies like here on Valley and Ann Arbor, Bay City, there are others in the state of Michigan, that's why I just will not be in support of this contract this evening. Thank you.
Is there any other discussion? Any other, you got Councilman Hersberg.
Thank you. I'll just real quick echo the comments of Councilman McDermott. I've had a lot of discussions with him about this. It appears to me that we've, the city's kind of outgrown using the Humane Society. They don't have a lot of space. They only have a five-day hold for any dogs right now. And I'm not here to tell stories, but it has become a problem in a couple of instances. So that needs to be discussed. I hope they take our no votes into consideration here tonight. And I hope going forward, we can maybe find an alternative or do what we need to do to support them in expanding. So, thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other discussion? Councilman Gobow?
You know, it's unfortunate that dogs have to be put down, or pets, dogs, cats, ferrets, whatever. There's a, we get a report monthly now from the Humane Society. And the numbers that actually do get euthanized are low compared to the number of intakes that they have. You know, there aren't a lot of other animal shelters in the area that could process the volume that our animal control department brings to them. So it's nice to have ideals about, you know, no euthanasia for the animals, whether they need it or not. But the reality is, there isn't one in the area that's close enough by that would make it a viable alternative to utilize for this service of taking in the animals that our animal control department does a great job in bringing to them. So I'll be supportive of it. If we want to find another location, we've got another year. I mean, a year's gone by. This came up last year and there's been no movement on trying to find another location to handle the animals. So, you know, if they can come up with a viable solution a year from now when it, when the contract comes up again, so be it. But there's not a whole lot of choice in, particularly in the area. And they are even located in Westland. A lot of other communities have to transport to Westland or to another municipality that's close by. So I'll be supporting this contract.
Thank you. Councilwoman Sampe.
Well, thank you for bringing that up. I actually had a lot of the same thoughts. But in terms of supporting this, I do feel that it's a viable option at this point. So I love my dog sometimes more than my husband. That dog is with me all the time. And again, I would feel so sad that we do have to euthanize. But unfortunately, the options here are very limited. So I would just ask that, you know, for us, we do look at viable options and possibly compare it for next year. But I would be in support of this because I would hate to see us not having a contract in place.
Is there any other discussion? Councilman McDermott.
Thank you. Just one other point regarding some statistics on euthanasia. In the 1970s in the United States, between cats, dogs, and other animals or pets, we euthanized upwards of 25 million animals per year. We now euthanize, as of the most recent statistics that I have seen, around 2.1 million animals per year. So what that shows is that we've made a lot of progress. We've had a lot of growth in regards to animal euthanization and how we execute that practice and how we carry that out. And so, you know, my request wouldn't necessarily be to find a whole new location, but it would be to work with the Michigan Humane at the Westland location to convert them, just like their partners at Huron Valley and in Bay City, to a, in the long term, to a no-kill shelter that doesn't euthanize. Certainly, I know that every one of us up here are dear animal lovers, and I think all of us are pretty much pet owners. So it's not about one side or the other euthanized versus not in this vote. I just think that it'd be nice to work with and send a message to the Michigan Humane up there in Westland that we appreciate the work you do. We appreciate the work that Bree and our team here for Westland Animal Control does, but that we'd like you to become a no-kill shelter in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other discussion? Any other discussion? Mr. Clerk, roll call.
Councilman Gobow.
Yes.
Councilman Hersberg.
No.
Councilman Hornbuckle.
Yes.
Councilman McDermott.
No.
Protam Rukowski.
Yes.
Councilwoman Sampe.
Yes.
President Hart.
Yes.
Motion passes. New business. Item 2. Adoption of prepared, I'm sorry, adoption of resolution authorizing entry of participation agreements in partial settlement of the national prescription opiate litigation and entry of state local government intrastate agreement concerning allocation of settlement proceeds. Wow. If approved, authorizes the mayor and city clerk, as well as attorneys for the city, to enter into necessary paperwork to effectuate the resolution.
I have a motion from Protam, a motion from Councilman Gobow, supported from Protam Rukowski. Any discussion from the maker or supporter? Any discussion from the council?
I apologize, Protam. Please.
I just wanted to take this opportunity to ask through the chair to our city attorney if he would mind sharing a little bit more information with the public in regards to what this means. And additionally, as an aside, with these settlement proceeds that we get, it would be my personal opinion that I'd like to share with you that we should be utilizing these proceeds to addiction prevention, especially with our youth. We have done a lot in regards to remediating and recovery, but that doesn't stop the problem. So if we can get ahead of addiction and try to use some of these funds for more activities for our youth, and just prevention in general, that would make me very happy. So, city attorney.
Sure, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that the council has. Just briefly, I'll say that any, the financial and budgeting impacts, I'm going to leave that to my esteemed colleague, Mr. Block here, if he has any comment on that. But with respect to the background here, the council may recall that a number of years ago, the Bernstein Law Firm and in addition to another out-of-state firm was appointed as special counsel in order to pursue companies that are manufacturing, retailing, and distributing opioids. For the reason that the manner in which that they were doing that was creating increased costs for municipalities all across the country. This is a really complex bit of litigation, class action, in which there's a number of municipalities throughout Michigan and throughout the country that are involved in that and attempting to obtain cost recovery against the manufacturers, distributors, and retailers of addictive opioids. And so the current council agenda item is authorizing our special counsel pursuant to their recommendation to execute settlements with certain of those defendants. And I think those are listed in the packet.
Satisfactory. Thank you.
All set. Is there any other discussion? Councilman McDermott.
Thank you, Council President. I want to echo my colleague's sentiments in regards to, you know, this opioid litigation. I think she's spot on. We know that the opioid crisis is a public health crisis. It is not a criminal matter for the courts and that people need help. And we know that Purdue Pharmacy and some of these other opioid manufacturers of OxyContin and various other opioids have created this problem. And the pill mill doctors that they contracted out with exacerbated this problem and made it far too easy to get folks addicted to prescription drugs and opioids. And some of these doctors were, and big pharmaceutical companies were making millions, were making tons of, the doctors themselves were making millions, and the pharmaceutical companies were making billions of dollars off of other people's misery and keeping people addicted. And there's a real cost to, you know, obviously the human element and folks whose lives have been ruined and folks whose lives have been lost as a result of the opioid crisis. And there's a cost that the city bears too. When each one of our, you know, first responders, police and fire, have to go out there every day and respond to somebody who is overdosed or OD'd and they're on their second or their third or their fourth run of the day to respond to an overdose. This is a real cost and it's good to see that Big Pharma is finally paying a price for this. Just like you saw, you know, 40 years ago with the big tobacco lawsuit settlements, this is what we're seeing here with Purdue Pharmacy and some of these other opioid pill mills. So this is one step So this is one step among many that we need to take. I'm happy that the city is moving forward in things like social work and hiring a substance abuse specialist, because we know that people are affected and families are affected here in our community with the opioid crisis as well. And we should treat it like the public health crisis and emergency that it is. And it's good to see that some of these big pharmaceutical companies are being held to account. And again, I echo what my colleague, Councilwoman Murkowski, said. Thank you.
Councilwoman Sampson?
Thank you. I just also am very excited to see that we're taking steps in the right direction. I think it's been brought up, so I won't belabor the point. But I definitely would love to see some programs in the community. We often talk about our youth and things to do for our youth. And I think that the city and under the new administration is taking those steps to offer comprehensive programming. But I would love to see the reinvestment of money into programs that activate our youth and getting them out and mentorship programs and such, too. So hopefully, we can use these funds for the best use possible. But again, I definitely echo what my colleague said and the sentiments. But it's great that the city is, and hopefully, once we approve this, if we approve this, is going to engage in this. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Is there any other discussion? Any discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent? Seeing no dissent, motion carries unanimously.
New business. Item three. Approval of 2023 through 2026 AFSMI Local 1602 Successive Collective Bargaining Agreement.
Still moved.
Or? Motion from Councilwoman Sampson, supported from Councilman Hornbuckle. Is there any discussion? Councilwoman Sampson?
So we recently had a study session on this, too. I've been speaking with Local 1602 members, and it sounds to me like we've prepared a pretty great bargaining agreement. So I will be in support of this this evening. But I just wanted to thank the Local 1602. I'm not sure, I think there's a few of you in the audience. Matt's here. Just for working really hard. It sounds like it passed overwhelmingly. So look forward to hopefully passing this tonight and thanking you for your hard work.
Is there anything from the supporter? Councilman Hornbuckle?
I do agree with my Kylie here. This was long overdue. I think it took a while to get to this point. Those men and women worked really hard to help our community be safe and stay on track. So I will be supporting this, and hopefully, the rest of the council will, too.
Is there any other discussion? Any discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent? Seeing no dissent, motion carries unanimously. Now move into public comment. Let me find my script. Everyone speaking before the council should do so in a civil manner. Speakers shall refrain from abusive or profane remarks, vulgar language, disruptive outbursts, threats, racial slurs, or other conduct that interferes with the business meeting. Personal attacks on council members, the administration, city staff, other speakers, or members of the public will not be tolerated. The clock will start upon the first words of the speaker and will not stop while the speaker is recognized from the floor. It is a speaker's option to ask questions at this time, and the person questioned may choose to respond during the speaker's allotment of time. However, the clock will not be stopped once it is started. The clock will continue to run until the speaker is completed or their speaking time is exhausted, whichever comes first. Is there anyone on my right? Mr. Powell? You guys seem to be like doing paper, rock, scissors. Who's going to go first?
Josh Powell, Precinct Elliott in Westland. I was just speaking on the opioid agreement that you agreed to move forward with. I know you've already voted on and agreed to move forward with it. But I just wanted to point out that the city of Seattle, which is slightly larger than us, I know, but they rejected the agreement. Their initial agreement was $118 million is what they were offered, but they took them to court and got $467 million. So it might be worth the city attorney or others to just to take a look into if that might be a better route than getting $900,000 versus slightly more. But just wanted to pass that information along.
Okay. Thank you. Is there anybody on my left? Sir?
Hi. So Derek Davis. I work a lot with dog adoptions. This is actually kind of for all in council. I think that what Michigan Humane does is a fantastic job. But I think when you are using individual metrics, as Councilman Gobow stated regarding the euthanasia rate at the Westland Michigan Humane, it is important for all of you to remember that Michigan Humane is a gigantic network and that you cannot use the metric of euthanasia at a specific Humane Society when you know full well that they are able to transfer dogs from individual Michigan places, Michigan Humane shelters, all over the state. Not saying that they don't do a great job. I'm not saying that they have a high or low euthanasia rate. But using that as you're saying that they're a wonderful place versus looking for other shelters is lacking in education on that. You need to remember about the reach that they have as a whole and take that into account, which might be the best reason why to keep using Michigan Humane as the people that handle and harbor in all of our animals. But you must also take into account the hard work that other places do without the reach that Michigan Humane does. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody on my right? Ms. Bowman?
Thank you. Emily Bowman, Westland resident. And I'm actually going to also speak to the animals because having been someone that found some cats in the last several years and took them in and fostered them and then had to find a rescue that was not a kill shelter to help me. And then I have two foster fail cats that I own now, and the others were adopted out. I became very aware of how many rescues there are, both dog and cats, throughout Westland as well as the surrounding areas that we can use. They have the facilities, they have theirs, and he's right. They don't have the reach, they don't have the ability, you know, they're donations only, and they don't have city connections. So that opportunity to use that and grow that a little more, because these are great places, because there are people that are wanting to adopt, and they don't always go to the Humane Society for different reasons. And I will tell you that in a general sense, the conversation we always have is, oh, don't take your animals. If you find one or you've got to do something, don't take them to the Humane Society because it's a kill shelter. And so we, so those of us who are trying to do that actually don't utilize them, which, you know, changes things as well. And I just, I want to put that sentiment as well in that, and I think that's all. So thank you very much.
On my left? Ma'am?
Good evening, council, mayor, everybody else. I just have a question to ask. You were talking about the opioid settlement and everything. What happened to the deer program?
Deer?
Hello?
Chief Tadrusik.
Ooh, crickets. Wow, none of y'all old enough for that, huh?
Do you have anything to offer that, chief?
Yeah, through the chair, the deer program's kind of an outdated program. They're not really functioning that much throughout the country anymore. Now, we've kind of resorted to what we call is our Westland Police Community Partnership. It's kind of the same concept. We are, what we're using is we're using that program to not just educate kids in the school, but we're actually educating the community, too. So concepts there, just a little different name now. And with that, we've developed it into a nonprofit, so we can now, you know, use those funds to help educate community students and different things, too.
Okay. Cool. That's the second thing. You know, we had this little rainstorm the other day. I was one of the 5,000 that went without power. I had just paid my Edison bill. If I'd known that, it was going to happen. I would have kept my money in the bank and gained a little interest on it. But my issue is this. We just went through a meeting here, they had one in Dearborn. Does anybody know what the outcome of that, what the meeting in Dearborn was with the public service, whatever they are? Because if only one section, 5,000 people, lost power, and I'm getting these little texts from DTE saying, we're sorry, your power is out, I would be back on by 11 o'clock. Then I get another one that tells me, your power is on. It was 11 o'clock. My power had come on four hours before that. It's the worst system in the world. I mean, I don't think anybody should have to put up with it. They ought to give everybody a stifle just to get a dangong generator that I can't get because of the way my house sits. Okay? That's all I'm saying.
Thank you. All right, back to my right on this side. All right, I see none. We'll move back to this side. Anyone? It's Dale. Yep. Come on.
Ruth Dale, Westland. Traffic comments about our sub off of Middle Belt. Certain times, left turns are very difficult. Of course, you know what times those are. But mainly, I've been hearing about the left turn lane on Warren Road heading eastward, the left turn coming northbound on Middle Belt. There's a backup there often. And I've encountered that, so I do know myself. And what I do, and some others do this, we go through the light and we turn into the two lanes that go into Kroger's, and then we head over and come out and make a right on Middle Belt instead of waiting through usually like two lights because the backup is quite a bit. So...
You probably won't want to say that in front of the chief.
Avoiding a traffic device.
What color is your car again?
All right, hold on. Let's let her talk. Ms. Dale, I'll give you some extra time.
And council president Hart?
Yes, ma'am.
I will not be making any motions tonight. Thought you would like knowing that. I don't know how, I don't know how that came out. It was not on my agenda here. Just, of course, I still feel that way. Oh, I've had, the funny thing about my motion, I have had people calling me, and they agree. I'm like, all right, got to get them at council meeting and speak. But I still feel what I did talk about, they are so important to our city, and they should be up in those comfortable high-backed padded chairs instead of those cardchairs over here to, they look out of place, and they are so important. If there's some kind of problem, I don't know if I understood everything the mayor was explaining to me why he's trying it. So this is not permanent. Something to do with the lights. I don't know what you were, something to do with that. But we do have somebody with technology, who is that, Mr. Brown? It looks like he could work on the lighting situation. But that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. That was fun. All right. Is there anybody else in the audience? Nobody wants to follow Ruth Dale? I understand. All right, we're going to close a public comment and move to comments from the administration. Mayor?
Thank you, President Hart. Good evening, everyone. It's good to see everybody here tonight on this beautiful rainy evening. It's budget time, so I'm going to be rather lengthy tonight going through my three-year proposed budget that we presented to council on April 1st. We have a three-year balanced budget. It's a municipal industry best practice and also aligns up with our ARPA fund spending timeline. The general fund is $79 million, and it's a three-year balanced budget. It adds approximately $18,000 each year to the general fund's total fund balance, and it preserves unassigned fund balance at approximately $6.5 million. For taxable value purposes, the city's overall taxable value will increase, excuse me, increase a 7.28% due to market value increases and uncapping of taxable value due to new homes and home sales. The mileage rates for the city have remained the same as prior year. Operating tax revenue is estimated to increase approximately $778,000. Throughout the proposed three-year balanced budget, you'll see in accordance with the recently negotiated labor agreements, the proposed budget includes various employee restructuring of personnel and job duties throughout the city. The proposed budget also incorporates a new proposal of our ARPA, again, it's our American Rescue Plan dollars, funds in order to improve the retention and recruitment of both the police and fire departments. It's good to see a good presence here tonight from them. These proposed changes will still provide the city with an unallocated ARPA fund's balance of approximately $5 million. Earlier evening, the administration and city council held a study session in the council chambers, or excuse me, in the council conference room to bring in a firm who will perform a comprehensive organizational study for the fire department, at which time the city will evaluate those results of the study and will make further decisions at that time. It also contributes an additional $500,000 towards the retiree healthcare contribution liability above the normal pay as you go cost for retiree healthcare. $150,000 has been allocated for the successful volunteer retiree healthcare settlement program. Since the program started, eight retirees have taken advantage of this program, and a total savings to the other post-employment benefits or OPEB liability has been approximately $1.8 million. We're improving the neighborhoods with Neighborhood Services Department through the hiring of two full-time ordinance officers, along with continuing to supplement officers to support the efforts of Neighborhood Services based on workload requirements. Funding has been included for bulk pickup items to be sent out the curb during your normal residential pickups and for the new leaf pickup program. The costs do not, excuse me, the costs do not exceed the current revenues the city receives for sanitation efforts. More details will be discussed during the budget study sessions coming up. Funding is also provided for the city's master plan update, which I believe we have to update every five years. Major and local road capital plan expenditures of $4.8 million for various road repair projects, 56 major and local roads within 15 neighborhoods throughout our city. It includes $5 million over five years for the new sidewalk program. This program was going to reduce the city's liability for any hazards that may exist. We have water and sewer capital outlay includes improvements to the city's 611 miles of water and sewer systems. It's a lot of, it's a lot of, a lot of miles, which includes six neighborhoods and 40 roads for a total of $4.6 million. The budget also includes various capital investments of approximately $1.4 million, which includes a new roof for the court building, which is much needed. For the public that would like to attend, there's going to be, right now, there's two study sessions for sure confirmed. One is Saturday, April 15th, one April 22nd, and if needed, we'll have another one on April 29th, which will also be a Saturday. These sessions will run from 10:00 a.m. to, I believe, 2:00 p.m. in the council conference room here. And talk a little bit about blight. As council is aware, within the past year, the city began rolling out a commercial revitalization plan that's led to the demolition of two buildings. We all know the former Lee Wright's property and Nankin Mill Tavern in about a month. In my opinion, elimination of blight is a necessary step toward attracting new developments here to our city. The demolitions of these buildings will provide more attractive sites that are primed for developers, being a catalyst for new development while also benefiting the existing businesses in the area. Just so residents are aware of how this process works, our city staffers notify the property owners asking for fixes when they violate Westland's anti-blite codes. If the owners don't comply, the city files a complaint in the court, and that can result in the property owner being ordered to demolish the building or the city being given permission to do so. This process was codified last year with an anti-commercial blight ordinance. Once it's made obvious that the property owners aren't moving forward and fixing these issues on their own, we then move forward in a legal process by filing a formal complaint. Just so you know, we're working, exploring legal action against one other property, so there's a lot more to come. If I spoke out of turn, I'll have my city attorney speak during his comments after. Leaf pickup. If you see on the screens here, I want to talk a little bit about leaf pickup. I want to take a moment to talk about the great response we've received from all the residents over the leaf pickup program. Response has been incredible so far. We've had over 5,000 surveys been received. I know last time we were here, I think I said just about 400. I mean, the picture just tells it all right there. The best part is that 91% of the residents are excited about this program coming back. Created a special committee that met to review these surveys for comments and questions to find out what our residents want out of this program. And it is your input that will make this program be what you want it to be. So please keep the surveys coming. Go to, simply go to cityofwestland.com/leafsurvey or use the QR code available, and we'll look forward to continuing to compile this data so we have an educated decision. The Dog Vaccination Day was a huge success this past Saturday, servicing over 200 local residents and 40 veterans for a low-cost vaccination event. The 40 veteran dogs were paid for by the generosity of the Wayne Ford Civic League, so we always appreciate them taking care of our vets. Clerk's office, Clerk Lebon's staff was out there issuing dog licenses, dog licenses throughout the event. Also want to thank the wonderful staff of Michigan Humane, led by Anna Christman and her staff and volunteers, Terry Packer, our city council members who came out to help, Vic Bear and the Wade Ford Civic League, Premier Pet Supply of Westland for their donation of treats for the furry friends, Officer Brennan, our Westland Animal Care and Rescue Team and our Neighborhood Services Department, Lonnie Hedley and the IT Department, and all the volunteers who made it so successful. This is, this is pretty neat. So recently, as you guys all know, we have the Three Cities Art Club out in our gallery here at... Club out in our gallery here at City Hall. And every month, Three Cities Art Club changes the different artwork out. This month, we have special guests from Services to Enhance Potential, which is our step, and the Progressive Art Studio Collective. They have an exhibit at this Westland City Hall gallery, which will run from March 31st through April 27th. The exhibition will feature the artwork of over 40 artists from the past studios, Detroit, Southgate, and Westland. For several artists, this will be the first time exhibiting their artwork publicly, so I really hope you guys can go out and take a look at it. The show features a wide range of style and methods and many different 2D media. This is the second exhibit at the gallery of Westland City Hall where past artists are honored to present their creative expression without the walls of the Westland government... Within the walls, excuse me, of the Westland government. For more information about the Progressive Art Studio Collective, please visit progressiveartstudiocollective.org. Come out and see all the work of these talented artists. The Ask Me contract was approved tonight, so thank you very much to the council for voting on that. It was ratified in March by the union members, and tonight, obviously, you guys voted on the approval. This contract is a win-win for both sides. I want to thank the hard work of our management team, which included my chief of staff, Mike Ready, Personnel Director Stephanie Field, Budget Director Dan Block, Water and Sewer Superintendent Doug Morton, and our city attorney's office, led by Brandon Grisco, and of course, the entire union team. I think they just left, but I appreciate Matt Crop, John Shaber, Lisa Eggers, Heather Williams, Geesla Wild, and a rep from Ask Me Council 25 from Detroit, Mel Bradson. That's all I have tonight.
Thank you, Mayor. Move on to the attorneys. Anything from the city attorney today?
Yeah, just briefly, a quick comment on some of the blight cases that we've been handling that Mayor Londo has alluded to there. Just so the residents and the council are aware, the city attorney's office has been taking some pretty aggressive action at the mayor's direction in conjunction with a number of administrative officials to combat blight within the city. And I think it's important to know what we're talking about here is not just properties that, although they do look aesthetically pleasing, but we're talking about properties that, to a large extent, have been vacant for some time, have significant fire damage, pose a potential for molds, hazardous conditions on the property, rats, and things of that nature. So these are real public health concerns, and so I think it's important that the city attorney's office continues its aggressive push to remediate blighted conditions on the properties in the city. That's it.
Thank you. Let me get council comments this evening with Councilman Godbell.
Thanks. First, I'd like to congratulate Liam, Dalen, and Jacey on the three students that received the compassionate cities award this evening. Just more examples of some of the fine youth that we have in this community. We did get the budget. There's lots of questions that I have in regards to the budget as it was submitted. There's lots of areas that financially don't make a lot of sense, but we'll get to those as the budget sessions come up. The interim mayor mentioned again the leaf pickup program, and you know, quoted all these surveys, and I mentioned a few weeks ago that I didn't get a copy of the survey in the mail. I don't know how many other residents didn't get a copy of the survey in the mail, but it's kind of difficult to return a survey if you don't get it. Knowing that I mentioned it at a meeting, I still didn't get one from the administration. I ended up getting one from another resident that showed me the letter, and the first sentence on it is, "We're working with city council." And to my knowledge, and looking at the quick blurb that he had up there of this committee, there's no one on city council on this committee looking at this leaf program that we want to bring back. So it's a... There's a lot of money in the budget for it, and that's money that doesn't necessarily need to be spent on a program that historically... And I'd like to see the data from back when we discontinued the program that showed only about 35%, because our DPS crews, when they were doing the rounds, took count of how many residents actually utilized the program. And it totaled about 35% of the residents that utilized this program. And there's significant equipment cost, specialized equipment that only gets used two months out of the year and is very costly to maintain, particularly during the season when things get into those devices that they weren't designed to pick up. So I'll be curious to see what comes forward, but it's going to be part of our budget session, so this committee that is purely the administration's committee and not a council-involved committee already has their mind made up that this is going to go through. And I think it's a mistake, but I'd like to see some data, not just a feel-good program that's going to cost the residents money, because it does cost you money. It costs you the money that was allocated for curbside recycling program, the curbside containerized recycling program, is going to be utilized to fund this new program. And by the way, that funding runs out in seven years, and a millage will have to go back on again in order to continue this program, assuming that it all goes very smooth and runs properly and Mother Nature cooperates so that we pick up all the leaves at the right time and they don't blow all over the community. So I'll be real curious to see how this all pans out. That's all I have. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilman Hornbuckle?
Good evening. I want to thank Protem for leading us in the pleasure of leisure, so thank you. I want to thank the three young students for their compassionate work. That's very awesome to see our kids kind of leading the way, you know. They're teaching us how to be compassionate with each other and great example and great role models there. I want to thank the fire department for coming out, showing your support on the study session. It was great to see all you guys here, and I look forward to learning more about what you do, how you do it. This information is going to be great for myself, so thank you for that opportunity. And I have one special request for my kids, so bear with me. They want to see everyone at the Marshmallow Drop Friday, April 7, 11 o'clock, Naked Meals. So if you can show up and bring kids to the Marshmallow Drop, they'll appreciate it. So thank you. And thank you for everyone that came out today. Appreciate that too as well. Thank you.
Councilwoman Sampe?
All right. Well, I feel like the year's going by so quick. It's already April. I wanted to also congratulate the students too. We say this, I think, every meeting, but it's great to have them in here. And it's crazy that it's so full and so exciting, and then the meeting just kind of... People start leaving, so we want to try to keep them here. So Liam, Dalen, and Jacey, congratulations and thank you for being great students. I wanted to wish happy birthday, or belated birthday, to our council president, Protem Andrew Rakowski, who celebrated over the weekend. Wanted to mention that. And as I mentioned before, it is April, but it's Autism Acceptance Month. So I'm wearing my blue today, and in honor of this special month, I have my pin on, and I tried to dazz up with some blue as well, too. I don't have a lot of blue in my wardrobe, so I was trying to piece things together. Last year, I taped an autism awareness show. WLND will be airing it again. It was very well-received, so if you're interested in watching it, it's going to be on the cable station, but you also can look at YouTube. So I had a lot of great guests on the show. Don Nicholson was on the show with Edward. My mom was on the show with my brother, and we also had Officer Yoot, who talked a little bit more about city resources, which, again, it was a really great program. We are really trying to move forward to being an inclusive city. So we met with a nonprofit, Autism Society Greater Detroit. So their mission is really to provide resources in the community, and mayor met with them in addition to myself and CPSCLEES, and they really want to offer resources here. So we did a quick taping of just, you know, talking a little bit more about what they do, but they're offering free Tigers tickets to the last Sunday of the month. I'll share this on my Councilwoman Melissa Sampe personal page, but if you have an individual or loved one with special needs, they can get a free Tigers tickets, and then the parent or family member's only $5. So I'm going to share that information, so hopefully you find that helpful, but just wanted to mention that since it is Autism Acceptance Month. And then speaking about just being inclusive, the Wayne Wesleyan Community Schools is hosting a special event next Wednesday, April 12th. Families and caregivers can come to the Dyer Senior Center. They're doing an inclusive summer camp fair. So I thought that was pretty awesome, especially those that have an individual and loved ones with special needs. There's not a lot of options. So this is going to be a great way for you to come and learn about overnight camps and day camps and rec groups. So it's going to be planned from 6:30 to 7:30, and hopefully you can come out and get some good resources. The Dyer Center is located at 36745 Marquette, or you can go to the Wayne Wesleyan Schools' Facebook page, because they have the information on there. I also wanted to mention, I know there's probably a lot of those that celebrate Easter. There's a lot of different Easter events, but the annual Eagles Helping Hands is doing a field rush event on Saturday, April 8. It's at St. Mary's, Cause of Our Joy, so children 14 and under can rush the field. It's absolutely free. They had 400 kids last year. You just bring your baskets out and, you know, to hold your treasures and such, and they're going to have candy and prizes, again, absolutely free. So children 14 and under, if you want to arrive by 12, you can line up for the field rush, and the field rush is going to take place at 12:30. I think it's going to be a great event. Wanted to offer a few thank yous. So thank you to Mayor Londo, our city attorneys, administration, for moving full steam ahead on tackling this commercial area revitalization strategy. I think it's really important for us, you know, I think individuals also want to see great development here in the city. And I started working with the previous administration on the Naked Mill Tavern. I do have a family member that lives right behind, and I think Mayor Londo has put the gas on it, so it's... It really... It was really messy. So just kind of walking by, I mean, it was pretty bad. It was pretty bad. So I know the vacancy and the blight and the dangerous activity that took place there, that was definitely one site that needed to be tackled, but we have so many more in our city, so I just appreciate you moving full steam ahead on this to ensure that we see some development and, you know, that area is really primed for redevelopment. Wanted to thank the Wesleyan GCs and the Wayne Fork Civic League. My family, my brother absolutely loved it. We went to an Easter event this past Saturday. I just wanted to thank those that were involved in the event. I think it went really, really well, and hopefully next year, we can have more people come out, but it was a great event. It was absolutely a blast for my brother, because they had little treasures and he collects them, so again, a lot of fun, a lot of great things. I also wanted to thank Stevenson Middle School and Ms. Lara. She invited myself and Mayor Londo to come and talk to 80 students on what it was like to be elected. And we looked at them, we're like, are you sure you're interested in this? But it was a really great time. I talked about what it was like to be a councilwoman, and you know, these students were really eager to ask questions and just learning about the hard work and, you know, working with collaboration. We also had Kayla from our business retention. She came and talked about her recent experience as a college grad, so I don't know if Kayla's watching this, but thank you, Mayor, for allowing her to come out and, you know, just ask questions. She's a younger professional, and I think she probably connected more than myself with them, so... If you are interested in golfing, just a reminder, so the golf course is open too. So Mac Mayfield Golf Course, it was open on the first. I love going to the golf course, so definitely want to make your tee time accordingly, because they fill up very quickly. And we also, as mentioned, we had a study session, so thank you guys for filling up the audience and, you know, just being present. So I really look forward to the study. If you have anything that I can do ever, feel free to reach out to me. Some new faces in the audience, but I appreciate you guys. You know, we want to look forward to learning more about the study and how we can support Wesleyan's bravest, and again, you know, we are looking forward to it. Just a reminder that we have an ARPA study session. I know those in the audience, you guys hopefully will join us tomorrow, so it is tomorrow. I was just asking council president, I said, is it going to be here? Is it going to be there? Like, I've come with my ideas. So it is tomorrow. It's at 6:00 p.m. As mentioned, we have other study sessions, but that one's going to be great. And then our next council meeting is going to be Monday, April 17th, so mark your calendar for that. I hope everyone has a great Easter and be safe, and we'll see you soon.
Councilman McDermott?
Good evening, and thank you, Council President. I too want to thank our compassionate city kids for all their work and their dedication in their schools, showing kindness and compassion towards others. So to Liam, Dalen, and Jacey, and thank you for your compassionate acts. You really make the city shine and, you know, make our city and make our school district look great with what you're doing in the schools. And it's an honor to be able to honor the kids every month here with their compassionate acts of kindness. Want to thank the administration for putting on a fire department staffing study session. There's been a lot of us up here for a long time, repeating over and over again at council meetings the need to have this study session. Just to give folks some information, if you weren't able to be there at the study session tonight, what we're doing is contracting out potentially with a third-party firm who's going to take a whole comprehensive look at the staffing for our Westland Fire Department. And we don't have the results of that yet. They're going to be coming here into the city of Westland. They're going to be looking at all the data. They're going to be looking at everything from run volume to staffing levels to help us produce an adequate staffing plan. I want to thank our Westland Fire Department and the local union for stacking the room here. I think it's important to put eyeballs on all of us to make sure that we're doing the right thing on your behalf. And in my opinion, I think and hope that this study that they're doing, this organization is doing, is going to come back to say what we, I think a lot of us know we need, which is more staffing, which is we need two more rescues. That's ambulances in service, that we need an additional fire engine in service. So we're hoping to get those results out of the study. It's going to be independent. It's going to be comprehensive and all-encompassing, and I think it's going to tell a lot of us what we already assume and what we already know, that we're going to need to give these guys some help here and get a long-term staffing plan in place. Much I want to thank the administration for putting that together and getting that going. I wanted to thank the Wayne Ford Civic League and all of my colleagues who came out to the very successful dog vaccination event, saw almost everybody out there, and all the residents who came there and made it a really successful event again. So for Vic and his team, for the Michigan Humane Society, all the sponsors that came out and made it successful, lots of folks out there. I was able to get my dogs license renewed on the new three-year license, which is great. It's convenient, it's easy, and don't have to come back for a couple of years to get that taken care of. And lots of residents able to get their dogs vaccinated at a reasonable cost there, and it was great to see so many people out there. And so thank you, as always, to the Civic League and Vic for hosting us on this annual event. I want to thank the bargaining team for the Ask Me contract, the administration for all the work that went into that, Stephanie Field, Dan Block, and everybody. But also want to thank our union members at Ask Me Local 1602. This contract was pretty overwhelmingly supported by the membership of 1602. And, you know, organized labor is really the backbone of a successful working and middle class, and to be able to provide them with good pay, good benefits, safe working conditions in their contract is really vitally important, because our Ask Me members, those are our DPS employees. So when you see folks out there working on your roadways, your water mains, keeping the city looking great, keeping our roads in tip-top shape and fixing the neighborhood roads that need it, they are the ones out there doing that hard work, and they deserve a fair pay, honest day's wage, good benefits. And, you know, I think the membership was pretty happy with the contract that we gave them, so really excited that we're able to pass that in support of our Ask Me Local 1602 tonight. Couple of other things. So DTE was mentioned again tonight. More power outages, another round of them. The Michigan Public Service Commission is going to be holding two more town halls in regards to DTE. These ones will be virtual. They are on April 13th and April 24th from 1:00 to 2:00 p.m., so they are in the middle of the day. You can go to the Michigan Public Service Commission's website to find the meeting link. Again, it is a virtual meeting link. I would encourage everybody to attend, because we need to put more pressure on all of us as elected officials and on the Michigan Public Service Commission for the disgraceful job the DTE continues doing maintaining our power grid and the lack of investment in tree trimming, upgrading substations, transformers, burying more power lines. And there are some real tangible solutions that I think we need to push our leaders in Lansing on. I know that there are some Democratic state representatives and state senators who have some bill packages... some bill packages up there right now, working on DTE accountability and working also on the credit that DTE gives all of us, the embarrassing credit that they give all of us when the power goes out. A couple of these solutions that I just wanted to highlight. Number one is, right now, we all get a lousy $35 bill credit. The Michigan Public Service Commission has the power and their authority to push DTE to offer us a larger bill credit for when we lose power. I think we need legislation, though, that says, for every hour you're out of power, you get a $2 credit. National standards, I had the opportunity to talk to Amy Bandic from the Michigan Citizens Utility Board, and she informed me that national standards are $2 per hour for every hour that you're out of power, gets you closer to the actual loss that you experience in terms of food loss, or having to stay at a hotel, or vital medication that you lose. That's one piece of legislation I think our leaders in Lansing need to take up. We also need to change the law back regarding how you can sell power back to the grid. Unfortunately, DTE for folks who have solar panels at their houses really screwed them over by changing the amount of money that you can sell back, the amount of power, excuse me, in a kilowatt hours you can sell back to the grid. Of course, DTE changed that, so they don't have to pay out folks like, I know, you know, Mr. Powell's brought this up here before, so they don't have to pay out as much to folks who have solar panels or renewable energy at their home and sell it back to the grid. So we need some legislative action on that. Well, we need legislative action around accountability for DTE when it comes to tree trimming, when it comes to grid and infrastructure maintenance, and how much money that we're going to expect them, and what percentage of their net income, their profit, that we're expecting them to put back into the grid. And the final thing that I think we need to look at legislatively is regarding a public utility that is owned by all of us, similar to the Great Lakes Water Authority. There's no reason why we can't make some legislative changes in Lansing and do what the city of Wyandotte, the city of Lansing, and communities all across Michigan already have, and that is a publicly-owned utility. I think that is something that is going to take a lot of money and a lot of time to explore and examine, but it is definitely worth our while, because when you look at public utilities, not only here in Michigan like Wyandotte and like the city of Lansing, but all across the country, they offer oftentimes more reliable service. Their outages are often shorter in length, and they restore power quite a bit quicker to folks who are experiencing a loss of power. Just a couple of other things here to close out. I was happy to see that the council unanimously passed the opioid settlement. This is going to be critically important. As I mentioned earlier, we need to hold Big Pharma to account for the destruction that they've caused in communities all across the country, creating these pill mill doctor shops where they have killed hundreds of thousands of people and caused millions more people in the United States to be addicted to opioids and to be addicted to worse substances like heroin. I think that it's pretty unanimous that the war on drugs has been a colossal failure, and that we need to treat this as a public health crisis, not a criminal matter for the courts, and we need to get people the help that they need. I'm really proud of working with everybody up here on council and people in the community, the administration, on programs like hiring social workers. I know the police chief and the Westland Police Department has been at the forefront of advocating for that and those kinds of reforms for having a substance abuse specialist, but I think we need to continue to invest in the, in the public health platforms that we have available to us to combat the opioid crisis and passing this settlement tonight. And the funds that we're going to get from it is going to go, I think, a long way to what we can do here in the future for folks who are suffering from an addiction problem. Lastly, if anybody ever needs to get ahold of me, I'm always available on Facebook at Councilman Mike McDermott, or on my personal cellphone here with a call or a text at 734-890-2146. And with that, I bid you all a good evening, and hope you have a happy and safe, joyous Easter, if you celebrate. Thank you.
Y'all set?
All set.
All right.
Super sure? Okay.
Councilman, oh, nope, Councilman Hersberg.
Oh, you sure haven't gone yet?
Yeah, save for less. Thanks, Council President. Just to tee off, Councilman McDermott was talking a little bit about the opioid settlement, and I believe we got a sheet back when we started this that says what we are allowed and not allowed to spend the money on, and I heard a couple of council members bring up youth activities and stuff, and I think that was permitted, so maybe we'll have to pull that sheet back out, and we're going to need to start talking with council and the administration on what exactly we want to see that money spent on. And thanks to the city attorney's office for moving forward and sticking to it. I'm looking forward, thanks for everybody for coming to the study session on the fire department management study. I think we're all going to be looking forward very strongly to seeing what those results tell us. They're only going to be recommendations, so they can't tell us, the city, what to do and what not to do, they're recommendations, but again, that's going to be about two months until we get those results, so I look forward to seeing everybody there. And then I just want to thank Councilman Godbout for bringing, bringing up that discussion on the leaf pickup again. I was disappointed, the city had made a Facebook post saying that, you know, they started saying that council was doing this, and the first discussion council's going to have on this is going to be at our budget meeting, so that hasn't even happened yet. I was just really disappointed with the, the way it's been presented so far. It is coming out of that millage, and back a year or two ago when we passed that, I was under the impression that we were going to be rolling back the millage to the exact costs. I think Mayor Wild, at the time, we put it on the ballot for one mil, one millage rate, and we didn't know how much it was going to cost, and he said, well, if it comes under that, then we'll lower the rate. So now it seems like we're going to spend all that money. But again, I'm not saying I support it or don't support it. We haven't had that discussion yet. Looking forward to these budget meetings, and I'll see you guys there. That's it for me tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Pro Tem, Rakowski.
Okay, now it's my turn. Sorry, Councilman Hersberg, I thought you had gone. I would just like to congratulate, it sounded like a broken record, but every time that we have our students participate and we recognize them for their acts of kindness is probably some of my favorite meetings. So again, congratulations to Liam, Dalen, and Jayceon for being outstanding human beings and being people of character and compassion. You know, if you continue on that track, you'll have a great life ahead of you. Speaking of children, I want to thank Wildwood Elementary School for hosting me for their second graders as their mystery reader in March. I really enjoyed meeting all of them and their very creative questions and participation in our book. That was very fun. I would like to thank the Honorable Judge Sandra Ferenc Cesarelli for taking time out to meet with me as I interviewed her for our YouTube or cable station. She's the only person in our community who has done the trifecta of government leadership, so not only was she a councilperson and council president, but she was also your mayor, and she's currently a judge at our 18th Circuit Court. What?
No, I'm sorry.
Oh, sorry. Court, so just being able to have the opportunity to sit down with her and talk about her legacy, and then actually talk a little bit more about her as the human, was just a pleasure and, you know, a chance of a lifetime for me, so I greatly appreciate you giving me that honor. And then I would just like to encourage everybody and remind everybody of our Earth Day celebration. That'll be at Wildwood on April 21 at 10:00 AM. That'll be fun. And a lot of people have already mentioned our dog vaccination event, which was wonderful. I am additionally looking forward to our fire management study. I think it's important. It's a long time coming. Thank you to the administration for making something that we've been, you know, championing for quite some time a reality. I think it'll be a very eye-opening study, and I think it'll provide us with a lot of information of how to make sure that our residents are getting the very best service from the bravest individuals in our city. And so then, you know, it'll come back to us to kind of make sure that that becomes a reality for all of you, because the men and women of our fire department are fantastic, and they're brave, and they're doing everything they possibly can for you, so it's our turn to make sure that they have the tools and resources necessary to do their job in the best capacity that they can. I'm happy that we were able to pass the ASME 1602 collective bargaining agreement, and as colleagues have mentioned, that's your DPS department, that's your water department, those are the folks that are, you know, make Westland pretty, right? And functional, but it's also our clerical staff, and very much cannot happen in government without a very knowledgeable and talented clerical staff, not only in City Hall, but in your police departments and your fire departments and your DPS departments and elsewhere. So you want to make sure, because they never, our clerical staff hardly ever gets any recognition, and they do quite a bit of paper moving and phone answering. So thank you, and congratulations to all of you, and we recognize you for all your collective hard work. If you celebrate Easter, I hope you have a fantastic celebration, and thank you, Councilwoman Sampe, for recognizing my birthday. We won't say how many years it is, because I'm beyond that point. I think we're supposed to go backwards now, and I just, looking forward to our ARPA discussion, looking forward to reviewing what's already been allocated, how it's been spent, and what councils take on the remaining funds are. And, you know, like we said before, we need to gather all of our ideas, because we have a limited amount of money and probably $500 million worth of ideas. So looking forward to that. I would encourage you to attend. Of course, if you're watching this on TV, it's probably already happened, but stay involved and stay interested, and we will see you in two weeks. Thank you.
Thank you, Pro Tem Rakowski, and thank you for leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance, and also happy belated birthday, Andrea Day, as I call it, so happy belated birthday. Couple things, you guys have heard, everybody's gotten thanks, so ditto. We'll just go ahead and save ourselves five minutes right there. Just a couple things. Police and fire, thanks for coming out. Love having you here. Just two requests. Please stop shutting off my lights, and please quit knocking pictures off the wall. That's all I ask. Yeah, we saw you. They didn't, but we saw you. No, thanks for coming out. We appreciate it. And Mayor, one request, please have them look at that light for Ms. Dale, because she just unknowingly admitted she was committing a crime in front of Chief, so I don't want her to get in trouble. Okay, so take another look at that light for her. I'd appreciate it. Other than that, happy Easter, everyone. Thanks for coming out. Is there a motion to adjourn?